He got you some head shots. He can't just give you draw.
I'm not worried. It was very explicit in his explanation of what was gonna happen, so.
He is very fussy about it.
I got that impression.
He's very fussy and he can pass his name on it.
The thing is, it's not necessarily doing the family thing.
I do it everything.
Okay. He fixes my ugly face up a little bit.
Okay, Mr. Plutcher's coming right back over there. I know where it came to that one.
This is our board. All right. Thank you and welcome, everyone. Hopefully you've had some of your vacation already.
All right. Almost a year ago now, we came to you with a new methodology, so we're showing the capacity for our schools. I think the board was happy with that. And shortly thereafter, K3 came aboard and complicated it for us again. We've been spending a little bit of time making adjustments to the model. And now we're ready to come back to you with the latest update and talk a little bit about the timing and future procedures for the capacity methodology. Because I know another strong interest of the board has been is to set it one time a year and use that number throughout the year. So we'll talk a little bit about that, too. But first of all, kind of a reminder, the capacity methodology shows you the school capacity with or without trailers, either way. But it represents the use of every classroom based on the school's educational program. It includes both the capacity and non-capacity classrooms. As you remember, we have classrooms that support the instructional program but do not provide capacity. Then, which, okay. Now, the capacity of each classroom is determined either by legislation or by the instructional delivery. And I'll just, for an example, like the gymnasium or something like that, we would adjust it based on the size, how many students that would serve as a classroom, just for example. The totals got changed for the permanent school unless there are new seat gains, new schools with seat gains. A renovation, it changes the capacity of the school. Or, like the K3 legislation, a student-teacher ratio adjustment, if that happens, or a significant educational program change. An example here, given it as a magnet program, it's instituted at a school. Now, the proposed schedule for the capacity methodology, because what we're looking at is that new school capacity will come out in March of each year. That will show you the projected capacities for the upcoming school year. The board would then be able to use that through your appeal process and the assignment process that happens over a few months after March or in that timeframe. Also, during that timeframe, what would be used for membership will be the projected membership for that fall. That way, the board can use that, looking at the new capacities and the projected membership to make decisions on the appeal hearings if necessary. Then, in December, once we have the new school year process and the numbers have settled, we would publish the actual facility utilization report that has the actual student membership. And that will show you the capacity, where we stand each year. That will also be the capacities or the utilization rate that is used when we sit down and do the annual CIP update, to show where we need new seats throughout the county and how many seats we're short. So with the facilities committee, we asked there, did those dates make sense? Was that what the board would like to keep as March and December, basically, with projections in the middle for you to work with during your appeal hearings? The facilities committee pretty much nodded yes on that.
Mm-hmm.
Which, as late as been a rare thing. So now, let's talk about some of those changes. First of all, new school seat gains. And what we're talking about here is if a new school opens, the facility utilization report or the capacity report in the first year for each school level will not reflect the entire school capacity the first year. Because we're working through the assignment process, we want to make sure we don't have too large a numbers of students in the first initial years of the school. So you see here, the first year of a new school will reflect 80% of the capacity of that school for an elementary, 60% of the capacity for the middle school, and 50% of the capacity for the high school in the first year. The second year of that school, you see the numbers go up. This is something that long-range planning and student assignment sat down and talked about, how they wanted to approach this. They wanted to continue to use this process that's been used in the past. So that's why, new schools, you won't see the full capacity reflected in the capacity report for first year.
And just for the public, I think it's important to recognize that's because we open elementary, K3, high school, 910, etc.
K5.
Elementary's K5.
Yeah.
Elementary's K5, okay, great.
But the question would be, if we were contemplating opening a high school with three grades in the future, we would change these numbers to reflect that?
That is correct.
Okay. And if we were to open a middle school with only one grade, we would do that as well?
We would look at what the current trend is. I mean, if you start getting that tendency where you fill a school up immediately, then we would be changing.
So this is capacity, not enrollment?
That is correct.
So enrollment could still be different than this.
You will reflect the actual enrollment from the student assignment.
With the idea that we want the school to not be overfull within, like, at least three years before the place is overrun.
So mitigating the need for trailers or modulators in year two or three of the school's existence?
Yeah.
Hoping, hoping, and allowing for.
So my concern still is, not a concern, but is 80% the first year and 100% the second year? Is that a good amount or is it too high with growth? I mean, are you looking at the growth in that area? I mean, it looks like a reassignment on third year.
Like, again, like student assignment and Christina and long-range planning, they both take a look at that. I know you had a couple of schools here recently that opened up full, but I think after reviewing those items and looking at the future stuff coming up, they decided they wanted to stay with the 80 in order, two years.
Well, I misspoke. We don't open K3, we open K5, but we grant, we allow grandfathering of the fifth graders, and so that's easily the 80%. Second year, the grandfathering is no longer.
And again, this is capacity, not enrollment.
Exactly, exactly.
So ideally, there's, even at 100% capacity being reflected on the report, enrollment might still be 80% to allow for growth in the area in the basic assignment area. This is the capacity, this is how many seats are available to use this year, not necessarily the enrollment at the school.
Okay.
Because if we're 100%, we get to build enough, because we need to build for growth.
Yeah, I gotta look at that and think about that.
I mean, I think it's important to process, right, because that is a distinction.
Anything else?
Well, capacity, so how do you measure the capacity?
The number of classrooms times the teacher ratio in just the capacity classrooms. Or if you have trailers, we're not talking about that here, you add the trailers. So it's basically your number of capacity classrooms and the teacher ratio for each one of those classrooms.
Okay. So for an elementary, that would not include art, music?
That is correct. That includes our capacity classroom. Includes K1, 2, 3, 4, 5 at 18, 16, 17, 17.
So when you say utilization.
And after ride, which I'll talk about in a minute.
So when you say utilization, first year, 80%, what does that exactly mean?
You know what, now that you point that out, that's probably a bad term to have right there. Should just say capacity, not utilization, okay?
Okay.
Does that help? It shouldn't say utilization, it should just say capacity.
Those are two distinctions, I think, are the theory.
That's a good, good fix.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Some of the other reasons why we would have changes on your list this year, of course, some renovations would be finishing up, and capacities would change at those schools, the student-teacher ratio adjustment, which I'll talk about a little bit more in a minute, and educational program change, kind of repeated what I said earlier. In this case, I think Reed Creek was the one that's been reflected different, is that right, Christina? As a magnet. And then if trailers are added or retired from the site or removed from the site, that would change the capacity.
So what would special education programs say being added to a school would have a capacity for 10 students as opposed to 17 or 26? Has that been into, is that under the significant program?
That's a good point, and I'll be hitting that in just a second. We've got a little change there also.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other unique changes, you know, last year when we presented it, we had it at 20 to 1, that was the first increment of the K3 implementation. This year, we're gonna go ahead to 17 to 1 to start reflecting what the final numbers would be in. We know that the allotments are actually spread out over four years, but you need to start assigning your students to the schools in order to make sure you're able to meet that requirement under four years, at the end of the four years. Now, when we did this, this is what started the complication. As you remember, third grade has 17 students per class. And we have normally planned on fourth grade having 26 students per class. But it's really difficult to feed 17 into 26, even though with a lot of venue seats. So there are two ways to approach that.
And not enough teachers.
There's two ways to approach that. One is to increase the number of K3 classrooms and reduce the number of 4-5 classrooms. That was done on a lot of the schools. And then the other option we ended up having to use in order to make it work for all the schools was, we could no longer use a flat 26 to 1 for fourth and fifth grade. We actually changed the ratio depending on the school situation. That range now goes between 23 to 1 to 30 to 1 depending on the school. System-wide average comes out to be 26.2 to 1. But for individual schools, it will, it'll be different. And because of that, if you remember, the detail spreadsheet will reflect now a class size for every school for fourth and fifth grade. Instead of it being just at the top, there'll be one for every school now.
One question.
Good, 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 good. Hard, but good.
Okay. You've done a good job with that. Slight, slight question. The limitation on the extra student per classroom is a K3 limitation, not a 4-5 limitation. So even at a, if we say that the classroom, the ratio for school A is 1 to 25, there's no upper limit on that number if there's a growth spurt in that basic assignment area. Is that true?
True.
But there would be in a K3.
K3.
We'd have to figure out another classroom arrangement, find another teacher, et cetera, to accommodate anything over the state mandated maximum size.
Or ask for labor.
Which is called spend local money.
The other unique change this year, touched on what Ms. Kushner was asking about, is that in the past, if you remember, we reflected a capacity for the adaptive curriculum or the extended content classrooms. It was two classrooms usually that have a kitchen between the classrooms, and they were reflected in 8 to 1. All right? Well, with the push-in that we're trying to do with all of these students, you need to preserve the seats in the actual capacity classrooms. Now, in the past, when you didn't have the legislation, you had more flexibility there. Now, we need to make sure that we're preserving those seats in the classrooms. So we can't show two seats for every one of those students. So because of that, we're gonna move the extended content classrooms from the capacity classroom list to the non-capacity classroom. There will still be a classroom identified, there'll still be the seats there, but it won't reflect as part of your capacity for the school now. So you're looking at 10 to 20 seats at every school, we reduce the capacity.
So it's our understanding that by doing what is believed to be best for most of our, many of our special needs students, of pushing them into the regular classroom for some or for part of the day, that has to fall within the maximum class size number of students. So that push-in student has to be one of the 17 or 18.
That's correct.
Okay. So that is then saying that we, to provide the special services they need in their, in their unitary environment, if you will, then there's a secondary space we have to reserve for those students based on their special needs. So now, with the class size mandate is requiring that we have two seats for those students in order to accommodate the special education push-in strategy for educating the students.
I will turn.
So, yes, and let me just extend that a little bit. So every student who receives special education services is a general student first. So when we're counting, however we did capacity previously, special education services are just that, they're services. So if you're a third grade student with or without a disability, you are a third grade student. You may receive special education services, and indeed, your special education service needs may be so intense along with other students who are also located at that school that it requires a classroom, not unlike a CCR classroom, to receive services. You just receive more services in that classroom. So the way that the classroom mandate is now established, where we had some flexibility and where we counted that seat, we no longer have that flexibility.
So they're counted first in the regular classroom in the regular population?
Exactly.
So is that how every county does it? Every county does it that way?
I am assuming, which is a bold thing for me to do, that that is indeed how every county's doing it. All students are students first and then receive services, whether they're English language services, AIG services, special education services.
Another way to look at this is that those seats weren't available for the rest of the students necessarily, so you were kind of inflating your capacity for your school when you were reflecting. And then the last change here, as we said, that there is capacity classrooms and non-capacity classrooms. So if you think about it for a second, if you start adding trailers to a campus, adding capacity to that campus, adding more students to that campus, then most likely, you're gonna need additional non-capacity classrooms in order to support that additional membership you have at the school. Now, in the past, that tended to get reflected as part of the permanent capacity. What we're changing here now is that if trailers are added, and just for an example, if four trailers were added that were capacity trailers, you probably need to add another trailer as non-capacity for the instructional support to support the four new classrooms, okay? We're now counting those non-capacity classrooms in the trailers, we're putting those numbers in the trailer numbers. That way, so that later on, if you remove the trailers, then you would remove the non-capacity trailers, and the permanent capacity never changes for the school. So it was one more change we put in there to try to keep that number from changing.
Just for clarification, I think, so the, you said you're gonna put it in the number of trailers, but we have in the past, taken the number of trailers, multiplied it by the number of seats in a trailer to get the trailer capacity. But I'm hearing that we're now gonna have a differentiator in the trailers to be capacity and non-capacity trailers, is that correct?
Right. And the report will show capacity and non-capacity trailers so that you can do the calc, you can still do the simple calculation of how many seats your trailers would provide for capacity.
They're under the revised.
Yeah. Okay?
One thing to point out is that not only is it based on the number of trailers, but also what is integral to that school's educational program. Some of those schools do need those trailers to support their K5 population.
And those would be capacity trailers?
Yes.
Any other questions, clarification?
We do have a copy of the latest report attached, and the facilities committee did ask if we would add the non-capacity trailers to it, so you will find a revised one on there that reflects the non-capacity trailers.
I'm looking, and you had mentioned the, having each school show the 4 or 5 ratio.
That is in the detailed spreadsheet, this is the smaller final spreadsheet. All will be, all will be made available to you.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Zadarmer?
Hey, is there a way to look at, I'm sorry, I just started this, I was looking at the school capacities. Is there a way, like, when you look at a school, that if there's zero trailers, that we know there's room to put a trailer on?
What do you mean, to add if there's space available?
Is there space available on site to put a trailer? I mean, I'm looking at one of mine that actually is not have, surprisingly does not have any trailers on it, and I didn't know if there was room to place trailers. How do we know that?
We can, we can check those for you.
Individually?
I think it would complicate the spreadsheet to start adding that back to.
Yeah. Just ask as we look at student assignment.
Isn't there governmental approval?
Or, what else do they have to go through?
Just because there's space doesn't mean the municipality would approve it. There are lots of.
We have cooperating municipalities.
We do have cooperating municipalities, but they are very, some of them are very particular about.
Yeah, I get there's a lot of reasons why we can't. I'm just looking at space right now.
We would like to come to you here in the next, in the near future, let me just say that, with a master plan for trailers, that probably be a good time to have that.
Okay. That would be so fun.
Only rocks you.
I know it's, it's only me that likes this stuff.
All right, we're ready for the next item? All right.
No, actually not.
No. But she'll get ready. I'll get ready. As you get ready for the season.
I'm gonna try to get ready here.
Well, we wanted to bring to you why the elementary bids, because the bids have come in high. We brought this to the facilities committee, we went over that, we did receive a lot of questions, kind of, that are both facility-related and academic-related. So what we did is we've updated the presentation, if you haven't looked in the past hour, so this is a newer presentation. And we want to take you through the same information we gave the facilities committee, plus provide some of the answers to some of the questions that came through. We brought this to the Facilities Committee, we went over that, we did receive a lot of questions, kind of, that are both facility-related and academic-related. So, what we did is we've updated the presentation, if you haven't looked in the past hour, so this is a newer presentation. And we want to take you through the same information we gave the Facilities Committee, plus provide some of the answers to some of the questions that came through. With me today is Ann Marie Taylor, she is the Senior Planner for the project, and I'll ask her to introduce the design team.
So, we have with us today Leslie Taylor, the Principal of Wiley Elementary School. We have our design team, which is Mate Garrel and Johnny Wood, representing the PME side of things. And we also have Adam Falsen, David Repniak with Gilbane Building Company, who's our CM at risk.
Again, Wiley is one of, is the oldest continuous-running school you have in the district. This picture, of course, it is from 1940. So, one of the things we wanted to start off with here is to talk about program space standards versus the existing school reality. And this is kind of based off, a little bit off of Ms. Cash's questions about decisions that are made about schools, existing schools when we're doing renovations, how much of that we try to provide equity around the county, but also staying within some kind of reality of the existing facilities. So, what I wanted to take you through was a little bit of information here is that there are some guidelines we kind of look at when we're looking at existing schools, and these were, happen to be, somebody you may find familiar, they were used during our K-3 discussion with the principals. When we sat down with the principals and asked them to look at their schools and count their classrooms, we gave them some criteria. Basically, we said that if your classroom is 900 square feet or more, that's pretty much a standard-sized classroom, they range basically from 900 up to 1,000 depending on the type of classroom. But we also said, we recognized the reality of the existing schools and how long some of those schools have been around. And when we were doing this, we actually said if a classroom was at least 650 square feet, that we would consider that to be a regular classroom, but it would be below standards, okay, because of the size. But we would count it as a regular classroom with the expectation that you could put, for example, 18, 16, or 17 students, okay? There were also, another criteria was the small classrooms, these are a lot of times are used for the non-capacity requirements that we have out there, and they could run from in between 350 to 650. Now, I know you've all been in schools, and you've seen classrooms that are probably smaller than 350 being used out there because of crowding. But for the purposes of counting classrooms, we stuck, we stayed with around 350 to 650. DPI recommends 450 square feet when you're looking at small classrooms. So, now, let's look at Wiley. These numbers here show you Wiley prior to the renovation and after the renovation. So, we basically took the 30 classrooms.
Proposed renovation, not the last one.
Correct, it's the proposed renovation. So, currently, Wiley has 30 classrooms. 10 of those we would consider standard, some of those are small, okay? There's like three, the three small that could go towards the standard size. The 16 are below standard, and to actually get up to 30, there's been about, there's four classrooms being used that we would just say were inadequate with size. After the renovation, when we put those in, we will then have 17 that will be within the standard, 16, the same 16 there, this is what we talked about before with the Facilities Committee, is that we decided we'd be able to continue to use those, they're existing classrooms in the schools, and they were at least 650 square feet. So, you see, we now have 33, so we actually, the net with the construction, will add three classrooms to the school. You also see at the bottom of this slide that not only classrooms are being addressed here, there are non-classroom space shortfalls at the school, they either do not exist today or they're inadequate. So, this project would add an administrative suite with a secure entry or near-secure entry for the campus, it'll add space for student support services, it'll offer a planned operation for the loading dock, and it will also offer some more staff toilets. Joe, is it fair to include those four inadequate classrooms? I mean, well, Wiley really have 26 classrooms, and they're making do with inadequate spaces because of the popularity of the school? That is correct, it's just that we did, we did reflect them as being in the school as part of the capacity when we reflected it back, so I wanted to make sure we showed it. We're actually gaining more than three classrooms, though, with the space.
I'll kind of touch on that a little bit in a minute.
All right. So, now, let's talk about capacity. One of the questions was, what would be the resulting changes in capacity? And what I want to show you here is if you look at the current Wiley as it is today, and you look at it as if back to pre-2017 capacity, when we were still 21 to 1, okay, that was the last time it was reflected as the regular capacity, you will see that the capacity was 426. Of that, there were 30 classrooms, you see they were broken out, down into 18 for capacity and 12 for non-capacity classrooms. After we, the proposed renovation occurs, and you implement the K-3 requirement, and we've done some realignment here in order to address the K-3 alignment, you now see there, there would be 22 capacity classrooms. Basically, we've added one capacity to each grade level, K through three. And you reduce the non-capacity by one in order to provide those four. And the other thing that we did was, the project originally intended to take three magnet classrooms, increase them by two for a total of five. After K-3 realignment resulted in a reallocation of those, of three of those magnet classrooms, and the one computer resource classroom to the capacity side of the house in order to serve the students in the school. When you do that, plus you add the three classrooms, you see now that the capacity is 430, the slash 10 is now a pre-K classroom that will provide some capacity, we don't usually reflect it in the numbers, but I wanted to show that up there.
Well, that's what it is, there's 10 in pre-K.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, at the Facilities Committee, we mentioned that there were nine classrooms in the construction. What we have here is there's three additional being added to the site. There's one in the media center, which we're building a new media center, if you remember, there'll be one in there. There's one that is currently uses admin space, and that we will now return it back. At one time, it was a classroom, it was converted into admin space, and we're now returning it back to the classroom, okay? And then, there's four in which the classrooms were inadequate, and we're replacing them with new standard-sized classrooms.
So, can you just remind me, the current library, which is the auditorium, is that staying as the media center, or is that changing?
Now, we're, we're removing the media center from that space, building a new media center, and converting that auditorium space into, the day-to-day use would be the learning commons, which the board approved a while back, and, but they would also be able to, with flexible furniture, but they would also be able to use it as an auditorium space as needed.
And we'll talk a little bit more about the actual design.
Joe, related to our discussion of facilities, if we didn't do the renovation and just stayed where we were, we don't, we would not stay at a capacity of 426. That capacity would dramatically drop. What was the number that would drop to?
378.
Thank you. So, realistically, we need to think 378 to 430, that this project is adding capacity.
That's K-3 legislation.
Yes.
Will we go, I don't want to jump, jump the gun on the presentation, so we'll maybe talk about that, the non-capacity classrooms, what they're used for, the 11 non-capacity classrooms.
Sure. I'll go ahead and tell you. Two of them are for the extended content classroom, adaptive curriculum, the one that we were talking about earlier that has the kitchen in between the two classrooms for special education.
The suite.
The suite. Two for that. There's two for resource classroom.
CCR.
There's two for general ed support classrooms.
That's things like, you know, anything with proficient, AIG, those kinds of things, right? Intervention.
Intervention.
One art classroom, one music classroom, and two magnet classrooms.
So, if this school was not a magnet, and I'm not saying that, I'm saying it because, I didn't say it, but I'm not promoting that.
Okay.
We would only gain two classrooms?
Yes, and here's the, you've got a small school now, and here's part of your issue, where do you put those two classrooms? Because you put them at any grade level, let's say you put them at K and first, but then you don't have the class, if you fill them, you don't have the classrooms at second and third to handle the student.
So, two classrooms doesn't gain a way to promote them through the school.
At most, if you happen to have a, pardon my language, but you have a bubble going through the school, you might be able to use those classrooms to handle your bubble as it goes through the different grade levels, all right? Because you have too many students at one grade level by chance, you might be able to use it to handle that.
So, my question is, to gain more capacity for the school, for the cost of money that we're putting into it, there's no way to gain above 330, I mean, 430? That's, that's what I would hope and would make it easier to talk about this school.
Unless you just change your entire concept, and you would probably have to tear down the school and go.
Well, no, I would never.
That's not going to happen, that's not going to happen because the space doesn't allow it.
No, and I would never do that anyhow for a historic.
You would have to, I mean, in order to do that, given the current program, the way it is, you would have to take one of the other non-capacity classrooms, like hard work, away to do that.
And there's nothing, nothing else that, especially in.
And if you think about it, actually, if you increase your seat capacity, then you probably need to start increasing, you may have to increase your instruction, the non-capacity classrooms in order to provide instructional support you need. Okay? So, it's a, it's a double edged sword.
Yeah, I'm needing to ask all these questions, it's important, because this is a large amount of money for a small capacity.
I do think it's important to note what was said earlier, that if we, if there were not a renovation, I think it was Dr. Mark had brought it up, that that capacity is 378, based on the K-3 class size. So, the capacity gain with the renovation would go from 378, as it is now, to 430, plus the 10 for pre-K.
Would we be putting pre-K there, or if they're already pre-Ked there?
There's no option.
So, we're putting one there because, I don't know how you guys pre-K.
Well, we, our, our hope is that as we renovate a school and build all new schools, that all of them have space.
Joe, did you do the calculation the other way? That if we still had the 21 to 1, what would the population be after the renovation? Yes. Yes, 428.
No, can't be.
He means that after you renovate, instead of 430, if we didn't have that K-3.
If we didn't have the K-3 class size limitation.
We would.
And the classes were able to be used at 21 kids.
And you did the renovation.
Yeah, you added the new classrooms, you did the renovation, you now.
You're changing our capacity.
All right, never mind.
If, if.
I'll talk with the offline.
If not, anything, we can think about it.
In the future, when that legislation. No. As far as an investment, I think that's just what your point.
Just looking at.
Yeah, I think that's your point.
No, I think looking at the way that you, they were explaining, 378.
It's just confusing some of your simple, some of my main.
378 compared to 430 is a number I like.
There were also some questions about enrollment, and I will start with this, and if you have a question, I'm going to turn and look over there to the other side of the room.
Yes.
But let's go with, right now, the projected enrollment is 405, and I'm saying projected because what we, what student assignment has done here is they've tried to do an estimate for you because they feel like the kindergarten enrollment is not there yet, so they're trying to reflect what they think it would be. The number the Facilities Committee saw was lower than that, it's because it did not have the K, the kindergarten numbers in it, okay? Just a reminder, Wiley was capped for one year due to overcrowdy, and that may have played some part in some of the numbers that are shown here and some of the trends that are going on.
This projected enrollment also likely reflects the perception that it's going to be a garner during the swing as well, is that not right?
Perception.
Wiley South.
It's not a perception, it is a reality, but that is, go ahead. Impact the enrollment number, which is.
Yes.
Why would be low?
There are 394, I can actually, today, after this morning, go figuring, you know, historically, you're looking at about, about 10 to 12 more, we think, people let out what they've been wanting by.
If you look at the number.
Go ahead. If you look at the numbers, go ahead.
The number of residents that actually live in the base, okay, and they're enrolled in the school system, so that means they could be enrolled somewhere else, not at Wiley, but they're located in the base, the projection is about 341 students.
That's without magnet?
That's without, that's without magnet.
That's base only.
It's base only.
Yes.
Okay? That's students living in the base area.
Do we have a waitlist for magnets for?
We'll get to that in just a minute.
Oh, I love that one.
You see here, is the base growing? Well, it's inconclusive. It was growing, it took a dip for a minute, for a little, for a year there, we're now wondering, some indications look like it may be going back up again. So, student assignment wanted to say was inconclusive at this time of what the trend is for that base.
That has to do with the recent reassignment, where we added the base of Wiley, it's tough to tell, we just don't have enough history to make it conclusive, to give you a conclusion.
So, what would be the projected base residents attending the base? They're looking at around 278, and about 81%, 82% of the base students would attend Wiley.
So, there's a percentage of the base that's not attended one.
Right.
So, that brings that number further down.
That's percent of who lives there goes.
Now, the projected base percentage of the actual school membership would be right around 68.6%.
Okay.
Base, attending base, that has been trending down.
Do we know where the base is going?
I don't know. I would project that's because of the renovation and going to guard.
Yeah.
I'm aware that.
You can see it's like a magnet application out of Wiley this year due to the renovation and transfer classes.
Okay.
The marked magnet membership is 45, which is about 25.9%. Is the magnet membership growing? Yes, it is. The target for the magnet is 30 to 40%.
So, even currently, its base percentage is healthy and exactly where it should be, 6 to 8%?
Quite that. The magnet waitlist is 36, 28 of those are priority, with priority. And then, the other membership at the school right now is 22 students. That would be students of, students of teachers, transfer. Correct. Some kind of other assignment. Unique cases. Any other questions about enrollment?
Good job. I love it.
Thank the people over there.
Thanks to everyone for their hard work.
All right, back to the facility itself.
So, we just want to just touch on a few things that we've talked to you all about in the past before, but just to bring them up to the forefront of your memory. This is the front of the building, the terracotta and the brick and the original wood entry doors that will be restored as part of this project. The 1923 building has terrazzo throughout on every single floor, not just the bottom floor, but all floors, and it does need some work. Additionally, this is the auditorium space that we talked about a few minutes ago, it does have the original proscenium, proscenium surround, it has the tall ceilings with the columns, the plaster details, and all the woodwork in there, and so, the idea is to restore this space. Now, this would be restored to an auditorium space, but it would. Now, this would be restored to an auditorium space, but it would be used every day for the learning commons.
Just out of curiosity, are there, is there the possibility, have we explored historic renovation grants for this kind of thing?
I've done some research on that, there's just not a whole lot of money, like everything else.
Right.
Resources.
Thank you for checking.
So this is a view from the, the main carpool entry, the backside of the building, most people drop off here, that's the entry to the 2001 wing is in, immediately in front, and then the 1923 building is what you're seeing on sort of the right hand side. And obviously, the transformer right there in yours, the main transformer.
Later on, we'll have more discussion about this particular part, the ramp, the bridge, what's known as the bridge.
Yeah.
Back here, and the plans for this area and the proposed renovation.
So this is the existing site plan for Wiley, to just give you an idea about how small and tight the site is, and the 1923 building is the sort of T-shaped building in the front with the 2001 building on the top, and then the cafeteria building is the one to the left that we are proposing to renovate. This is the new site plan proposed, what it does is it restores the water tower property site in front of the new wing of the building, which is the dark purple space. It pushes the parking and the carpool entry farther up onto College Place, trying to get some of that traffic off of St. Mary's Street. It does currently queue back to Park Drive at the bottom of the hill. And we do maintain the number of parking spaces that we currently have in the proposal. This is the plan that you all saw at schematic design that shows the new building. What this does is, this is the, what we call the ground floor of Wiley. In the 23 building, we still have the six classrooms and some teacher support spaces. In the 2001 building, it renovates those three classrooms, and then we add rock music, plan ops, a kitchen, and the cafeteria, which will be, have a view of St. Mary's Street. This is the main level, if you'll recall that picture of Wiley, you go up those main staircases to that sort of second level of the building, that's where the main level of the building, where the admin is now. And what we're proposing to do in the new addition is to have a new entry off the carpool, secure entry into the proper admin suite and student support services. Adding the new library on that level, adding your magnet classrooms and your adaptive curriculum suite with the kitchen, which we want to, which they do not currently have.
Can I ask about the front entry security? So, do they go into a vestibule and sign in like we've talked about doing in some of our schools?
In the new building, yes, they would.
In the new building?
Yes, so right here would be the new entry, you would be secured into this reception area, and then come back out through here into the building.
Okay, so they actually are kinda like in a.
Unlike what they have now, where they butt badge into the, or buzzed into the building, and they have to walk several, pass several classrooms to get to the.
So they'll actually come into the, sign in and be seen.
That's correct, yes. And then the big piece really of this concept of this school has been the security and having an enclosed corridor for the students and staff to move around in, which would be this corridor here, which encloses that courtyard, and wraps around the main as on the second floor and on the first floor as well.
Okay.
So you do not have to go outside any longer to get to any other part of the building.
What would be done with the current main entrance?
So they still use the main entry, and I would assume that they would continue to use, that's the walker entry, a lot of times, people will park in the, in the Funeral Home parking lot and walk their children up the steps and come into the building that way. And then.
Which would presumably be closed once school started.
Yes. And then bus is back on Calvin Street, and their entry is through to the 2001 building, and then carpool entry would be here through this main door.
People gotta be able to understand where the main entry is.
Yes.
Really?
All the carpools are coming in the back already.
There's nowhere to park them except for around the main entrance.
Just how they sit there.
The carpool, the transformer picture.
Yeah, the footprint's going.
That's where the carpools are dropping off now.
How about the main entrance, like if we came to this and take it in? You wouldn't go to the front door.
You wouldn't go to the ceremonial front door of the 1923 building.
Okay.
I mean, if you wanted to go upstairs.
That's what I was about to say, you would know, you'd walk up to it, and then you're not up there.
Just the way it says.
A couple of appropriate signs.
Some signage. We don't have signage in our schools, we have no signage in most of ours. Another, another distinction.
That would be interesting one, too.
Yeah.
First lots of.
There's a municipality impact for that.
That's right, that's what I was just.
Even more fun.
Right.
Even more fun.
But we, but, and to your point, we have great relationships, but they also.
Ready to move on? All right, so bids as they stand right now, we're looking at a ride around 3.8 million over the budget, and we still have one combination package that's still, we're still trying to get somebody to put it on, and we're still working through some of that, I don't have, there's not really an update on that at this stage. So how do we handle the 3.8 million? The team looked at, well, first of all, let's just talk about what we think happened here. Again, just to recap, we knew from the beginning, all these things you see listed here, and you just heard described as we were talking about the site, we knew those existed, we knew that they would play a part in this project. From small site to unique construction sequencing, traffic management all around that building, and the preservation of the historic building, just to name a few, all of those items would play a part in that. What has happened since then is that there's now significantly more work available in the current market. It's kind of a bidder's market in that sense, and that they can pick and choose the projects they want. This one is complicated, which makes it less favorable for our bidders, and basically, I go with that last line down there, if I'm going to bid this, I'm gonna make it worth my while. So, we believe a lot of that is playing a part in why the bids are coming in like they are. Another thing to indicate to you is East Wake Middle School is bidding, is wrapping up its bids right now, and it is coming in within the budget. Okay? Because it's a, it's a lot simpler, less complicated project.
And it's not in downtown Raleigh.
Yeah, and it's not in downtown. So, the team looked at three options, and I'll talk a little bit about each one, of course, a redesign, which means that you put the whole project on hold, and you start redesigning, and you, you look at, any, any kind of options that thereby be willing to look at. A second option was just non-program scope reductions, using the bids that came in, we would identify items that were not program-related that we would take out of the project, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And then the third option was a reallocation of money to the full 3.8 million in order to fund the budget to meet the need. So let's talk about the redesign. Again, we're looking at non-program options, so what we have listed here, for example, are, in lieu of adding new ramps, we would leave the existing ramp you saw in the picture earlier, from the gymnasium to the courtyard. And instead of enclosing the corridors, we would leave the bridge and the exterior exits in the project. So, I'll just, real quickly, I wanna make sure you understand what that means, we'll go back to this picture.
So what that would mean is, currently, this is an enclosed corridor, it would wrap on the new building, it would wrap around like this, and go back like that into the 23 building. But this bridge and exits from the existing auditorium and exits from the existing gym would remain in place in the redesign.
And they go to where? What's that building?
Outdoor.
They go into, they would go into the courtyard, this is the 1923, this is the exits from the 1923 building existing spaces.
And that bridge leads to where? To the outside?
It goes from 23 building to the 2001 building.
Could you go to that and show us on the, what would go away, I guess?
What would go away is this piece of the corridor. So, the bridge is here now, so we would just end this corridor here, and we would leave this bridge and go back towards the.
So it's the exterior. It impacts student, it impacts student movement so that it's not contained inside, they still have to go outside.
Then they would be going outside to go. Going from one major building to another.
They wouldn't have to do that, but they would have to go all the way around.
Well, breaks up the building.
It breaks it up back up.
Yes, it does.
But, we felt like that was really the only non-program space, if you will, that would save a substantial amount of money.
Well, let's talk about that. We were looking at the potential savings of around $2 million, but there would be a delay in the schedule of right around eight months, and I know Ms. Cash at the Facilities Committee had a lot of faith in that we would be able to do that faster than that.
I definitely do.
I, I will have to sit here, Ms. Cash, and tell you that you need to make the decision as if we did, we're not able to do that. With that delay, the savings will be offset by price escalation that happens over that time, and by the way, this then impacts your swing space, okay, for the other projects coming down the pipe, which would mean additional design and pre-construction fees for those and for this project.
So, fuller rate than.
So, the 2 million may not be realized.
You might say that they are, but you have to spend an extra one or two million dollars on something.
Re-bidding this with a limited number of interested contractors.
It's a risk.
If they're not gonna give it to me at what I bid before, why would I bid any less eight months from now?
So a risk for, and then having a less unified space.
Right, yeah, you get less for the same price.
Or more, okay.
Option two was to take the bids we have now and look at some items, there was about $750,000 worth of non-program type elements that we could remove from the scope. Again, here, that work still needs to be done, so all we're doing is moving it from the project to lifecycle, doing it a little bit later, which means it could cost, those items could cost more at a later date. You would still have to go to your program contingency to find another $2.7 million to cover the rest of the bid. And then option three is to fully fund the project, and what we're showing here is that there is, the FY '18 program contingency has $4.2 million of funds in there. We're, as I mentioned earlier, East Wake Middle now is wrapping up its bids, so there are no further bids happening in this timeframe, and we could use that 4.2 to go towards the 3.8. I want you to be aware that in fiscal year '19, there is another amount of program contingency coming. Now, when I say program contingency, this is for the entire program. We're already dipping into the project contingency as far as we're willing to at this time, still keep dollars in project contingency in case there's issues that crop up later. This is the, the option that staff is recommending.
Option three.
And we, we've, we've exhausted all the local bidding in this area. I'm always told that there's a lot of local bidders that are not allowed to bid.
To answer your question, we have advertised, we have reopened up pre-qualification twice, and then reopened up pre-qualification again immediately prior to the bid, in order to increase the participation. I would say, yes, we have, we have gone above and beyond in terms of pre-qualifications, advertising, and accepting the later qualification work.
You do have a certain part of your construction market out there that's not interested in government projects, and they will not bid on them.
Well, no local, local bidders have been left out. That have bid it, okay.
Speak up, please. We started with an open house six months prior to the bid, this, this project was on the street for an extended period of time to get as much bid of interest as possible over as long a duration as possible.
And it's also been broken down to 41 bid packages to make it more available, you know, to the different trades and the different sizes of contractors and such.
And some of those packages you kind of double bid in the sense you have, you put some together and you split them out so you can get bids both ways, trying to attract different, smaller contractors or larger firms.
Okay, okay.
This item is on your action agenda today because the bids are in, they have a limited timeframe for them, and indications are that bidders are not interested in extending the bids.
And by that, you mean they don't want to do?
Sometimes, in the past, we've been able to get bidders to extend it a little bit longer if we needed to wait a little bit longer for some more discussion or something. In this case, they're not interested in extending. Again, I think it goes back to earlier, when I said they've got bidders marketing on them. So it is on the action agenda. Joe, let me say thank you to you and staff for bringing together a cohesive, complete presentation that deals with the questions that were asked in the facilities committee. And this may be a model for future conversations. Because it, when, when a board does something 12 months ago, you folks work with the project on a daily basis, we don't, so the, the gap between the rationale for, and support for why particular things need to be done can get lost, and so this is, I appreciate the staff bringing this to us in this manner. Thank you very much.
Sal, thanks, and I do hope that we accept the recommendation of option three, I mean, the school has been, talked about being renovated for 20 years, and I think part of the reason why we're here in this position with the costs we're looking at is because it's been the way for so many years, and the fragmentation of the building, the inadequate spaces, the safety concerns, those aren't going away if we don't go forward, so I really am glad to see that staff is recommending that we go forward as planned, and I'd be thankful to East Wake Middle School for staying on that journey.
I'd just like to add one other comment, that the six acres is a whole lot more than a city block. And if we, as we look at, at the capacity needs for our public school system as we move forward, we're gonna have to figure out what new construction looks like in a city block, and how are we going to provide adequate classroom spaces when there are no greenfields like East Wake to do? And that's a, that's a, a discussion and an investigation that I would really like for us to undertake, and as board and staff, to better understand what the urban school model looks like, what the policy implications are, what the program implications may be for a vertical school as opposed to one that's spread out. We still have the issues of safety for young kids and what those requirements are. I just, it's, it's important for.
I just, it's, it's important for us to go ahead and have that conversation and start working to synthesize and socialize this issue in our community, because we're going to have to go here. And it's not going to be any less expensive to do a city block project than it is this renovation we're talking about. I mean, it's just, that's, that's where we're going. We've got, the town of Marcell doesn't have any dirt. Most of our other communities do at this point, but if we have the capacity growth and, excuse me, the enrollment requirements in downtown Raleigh, we're going to be in this quicker than we think.
I think this 100-year-old school is bringing us back to, you know, this sort of dense development that we need.
Yeah, so I really hope that we would, as a board and with superintendent's leadership, figure out how to bring this difficult conversation together and provide some good guidance as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Now to the easy topic of the day.
This is 14.
Oh, wow.
The passing report is saying 14, and they've tallied it for 15.
I guess the 14 is outside.
Oh. Oh, okay.
So I'm not so upset anymore.
Glad you knocked that out.
I figured out why it might be.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes. It raised, it raised, I think that's a loaded question just a bit, but.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for taking the break and I'm going to start. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Let me take us back to your last work session where you discussed the 2018-19 operating budget, which was about, I believe, three weeks ago. At that meeting, our work session, we reviewed some additional information about the final state and county's budget, respective budgets, reviewed a number of options that could be used to close the funding gap of $25 million. That gap, again, as a reminder, based primarily on two areas. First, requirements of the final state legislation with regard to compensation and benefits. And second, that the county appropriation came in at $45 million. The Board of Education had requested an additional amount of closer to $59 million. We received some initial feedback from the Board as well on the 19th. One last thing, going back to that $25 million gap, see there's a little asterisk there, that does not include the potential impact of the $5.4 million that the county withheld as a part of enrollment reserve. And this is the actual language from the county's budget ordinance. Basically, reserved $5.4 million until after the 40th day count. So again, the gap we're closing today does not address any potential additional funding issues associated with this amount that's been withheld. And again, just to clarify, the county did provide an additional $45 million for county appropriation in their budget, but what they've actually will be giving to us will be $37.6 million, not $45 million. And the difference there is this $5.4 million as well as the $2 million reserve that they have set aside for funding for positions associated with social emotional learning. We'll talk a little bit more about that as well. So today, what we'd like to do is review final adjustment recommendations to close the gap that we currently have, receive any additional board feedback, and if the board is supportive of our recommendations, we will ask you to take action immediately tonight. Before we get into the recommendations, just a reminder, none of these are easy recommendations. It's a significant funding gap, and when 95% of our funding goes to our core business and over 80% of that funding is people, and you have a significant set of adjustments to make, it's going to impact core business. So the first recommendation, and you saw the revised piece of this three weeks ago, is to eliminate all newer and expanding program requests. Revision from the 19th is we're going to add the exception, with the exception of funding the extra duty schedule. This will be the fourth out of the five-year planned rollout of that schedule. So again, our recommendation is to eliminate all newer expanding program requests included within the board-proposed budget, with the exception of the extra duty increases. Next, we revised several estimates, and these will impact and assist with closing the gap. The first, we reviewed the current extra duty salary budget, and based on current needs, estimates believe we can reduce that budget by $230,000. The reason that's variable is depending on the years of experience of any individual or the set of individuals assigned to extra duty in any given year, it will vary significantly. One extra duty, I think, at a level one, entry level, is half of what they would be as a, they would receive half of what an experienced person would receive. So there's a little bit of variability. To put it in context, here, what you shared with me yesterday, it's a $14 million, it's a $14 million overall budget, so it's a very slight adjustment.
It's a one and a half percent, which is a pretty good margin.
Next, we revised, again, very slightly, an increased local revenue estimate for miscellaneous local revenues by $4 million. And last, and we shared this with you on the 19th, we revised our estimated carryover for PRC 60. This was driven up largely by the hiring freeze we put in place in January as well as the expenditure freeze we put in place. I want to caution the board that this is not a permanent solution. This is just a carryover amount that we're retaining a little bit more than we thought. It will go away eventually. And if I could quote our superintendent, basically, a year from now, there will be a business case request requesting for program continuity, $2.1 million, and that will be just to keep us in place.
No growth.
No growth. Next, recommend, and you heard this from us on the 19th as well, transferring some current staff that are centrally assigned, but they serve the schools. They're not the teacher of record, but they do support our schools. On the 19th, we had recommended transferring about 100 positions or effectively creating a $7 million savings. Of these positions, we revised that downward. Our recommendation today is to transfer and create savings of $4.5 million. Our plan is, and we've gone through this, spent a significant amount of time going through this even since the 19th, by eliminating 35 vacant positions. And granted, it's not impacting any individual staff, but those vacant positions otherwise would have been filled, and they filled positions, would have been providing services to schools. So it is still impacting services. And then, in addition to those vacant positions, transfer 27 actual filled positions. I want to remind you that at your board meeting on the 19th, you made the board aware of the need to put a freeze in place in order to keep positions in the school available for this, and made the board aware and got the general level of support that we wanted to move forward and begin some of those placements prior to the board adopting the final budget. And we have done that, and thus far, it's gone very smoothly. We've been able to lift the hiring freeze for year-round schools already, that we had that lifted before July, the end of June, before July 4th. Our estimate is we will have the entire freeze lifted, if not by the end of this week, by sometime early next week. That's our target, and we have that. And we need to do that because we've got to support our schools and the school administration in finishing up their hiring for the year. The next recommendation, we presented to you in June, putting, shifting the locally-funded teacher salaries up from the schedule, just fix it at a fixed dollar amount based upon 27 '18 levels. We're going to revise that in our recommendation today, and we are going to recommend investing an additional $3.5 million of funding to apply against the schedule, still to keep the fixed dollar amount. But what we presented to you on the 19th of fixing it at the 17-'18 level would have created savings or a budget adjustment of $8.4 million. By investing the additional $3.5 million against the schedule, that will create a budget adjustment or savings of $4.9 million. It brings that down, but it allows us to improve the schedule. It will allow for a half percent increase to the fixed supplement dollar amount. So under this scenario, teachers would receive their step increase, including any state increase, and the new fixed local supplement at that step, and that local supplement at any given step is based upon the 17-'18 fixed amount plus a half percent.
And I don't need it right now, but I'd love, you'd find it useful to go ahead and see the spreadsheet of this at each step, because I know we've had variable county appropriations to try to mitigate some of the irregular raises that came in. I'd just like to see the distribution.
Yes, sir, we are pulling that together, and we will have that for all schedules. Just while we're on it, we're not making any changes here, but while we're talking about compensation, and we're a human resource business, and valuing those valuable human resources, it's critical. I want to just review that the assistant principals are based on the teacher's schedule plus a supplement. So the changes to the teacher's schedule will have a positive impact on the assistant principals. And in addition, the state increased the supplement amount over the teacher's schedule by 2%. It went from 17% to 19%. And again, I want to remind the board that we have built into the board's budget, or the superintendent's budget, which the board then adopted as their proposed budget, a 2% increase for non-certified staff or $1,000, whichever is greater. And again, that $1,000 is based upon a full-time employee, that would be appropriated for a part-time employee, that would continue under this scenario. And that would include bus drivers. You'll also remember that the state separated out a separate dollar amount for bus drivers, separate from all other non-certified staffs. So we would still plan to apply this to all non-certified staff, including bus drivers.
So is that a local supplement on top of their state, Hillary, then?
You could look at it that way, yeah. We would use local funding to make up the difference. We will still present to you a recommended principal salary schedule. Hold harmless remains, and we have funding reserve for increases for principals. And again, we'll bring that back to you at a later date. We did pull together, starting in January of this year, a group from principals and human resource staff, Ms. Ellis and her staff who were involved with that, I was involved with it. We believe we've got a thoughtful plan for the principals that will continue similar to what was in place for the 17-'18 year, things to mitigate the impact of what was a brand-new state schedule for 17-'18. We think we, what you see will not only continue what we were able to do for 17-'18, and even make further improvements in mitigating the impact for the 18-'19 year. Moving on with the actual recommendations for adjustments to balance, we're recommending eliminating certain specific non-core curriculum supplemental digital subscriptions, a fortune of $1.13 million. You see them listed there, I'm not going to go through each one. The decisions were made not lightly, they were, some were based on usage, and a lot of it was based on, did we have alternatives that we could use to provide a similar resource? Second on this page, this is not a discontinuation of a resource, digital resource, but a changing in how we are recommending to fund it, and this is the Discovery Education Streaming Plus content, which covers all content areas. It had been paid for out of central services most recently. Previously, it had been paid for by the schools. We made the decision several years ago to fund it centrally. We were able to negotiate a contract as a district as opposed to individual schools each getting their own contract, which did achieve significant savings. But what this recommendation would do, well, continue service, we would use $3 of the instructional supply allotment per student to pay for this. The current instructional supply allotment per student is $68. This would effectively reduce the instructional supply allotment at schools down to $65. So it's a different way of paying for it, but it does allow us to adjust the budget by $0.5 million.
And that's used generally K-12 across different curriculums, and it's used widely?
It's, a lot of the Discovery Education Streaming Plus content is embedded in C-MAT as options and resources across all content areas of great loads.
We're recommending an across-the-board, non-personal budget reduction in central services of $1.25 million. We recommended a slightly smaller amount on the 19th, we've increased it to allow us to do some of these other things. It's local funding sources only. We've excluded the utilities funding and charter funding, and effectively, it's a 1.65% reduction across the board. I'm not a fan of across-the-board reductions. They're not strategic, but there is a time and a place for them. We're going to recommend increasing the high school parking fees by $30. That will generate $225,000 additional. That will generate $225,000 additional dollars of general revenue. The last increase was in 2008-9 for those schools, and the current fee is $170. This will bring it to $200, and assuming this is approved, some high schools have already started selling parking permits.
They sold them, yeah.
We will instruct those schools, if this is approved, to go back and collect the additional amount.
There's, that's a lot of bookkeeping for some of these schools, and so you're going to ask everybody to go back? I didn't even think about that, it kind of came up in some emails today. Okay.
It'll take a little bit.
You what?
It'll take a little while.
The next item, and this, to some degree, was planned, is to pull back $676,000 of additional funding that was provided to the night. When they re-imaged themselves several years ago, that funding was not intended to be recurring on an ongoing basis, they've received it for three years now, they've been able to build the capacity they need, the school is in a position where they say they can do without it, and so we're going to pull that back. We are going to take what we currently have, there are eight schools that each have a half-time STEM proponent, and we're going to pull that funding allotment back, and each school is going to use other resources, ADM or other resources, to retain these positions. Not eight schools retaining a half-position, but we're going to work it out. Again, we maintain a resource within the school, we maintain the staff, but we reduce an allotment, and it creates budget savings. And finally, we're going to adjust our growth business cases by $1.1 million. We will come up with formula changes to do that. The recommendations presented do align with the board's proposed budget with funding available. Again, they do not, what we just presented does not address the potential impact that the county would hold in $5.4 million. If the board supports, we're going to ask you to take action tonight to approve the operating budget. We'll return after the actual adjustments are made with the final budget resolution that we have in the past. And if you do take action tonight, we will come back to you at your first August meeting and ask you to take action. We'll present a plan to you at your work session, but then ask you to take action to request the county to release that $2 million reserve for funding for staff for social-emotional learning needs, so we can move forward with that, assuming you approve the plan, move forward with recruiting and staffing those positions. And with that, we'll be glad to answer any questions on any of these recommendations.
I think you've done outstanding job with the bad hand that was dealt. Thank you.
Well, I have to say that middle school orchestra is not being cut this year. Because it was cut last year.
It's not there to cut.
It's not there to cut. And so what we're seeing is an annual exercise, dancing around marginal budget. And I've been doing some research in this area and working with staff and trying to understand where the state is transferring expenses that they are supposed to be handling as an operating budget to the county. It appears that we currently have an annual obligation of $120 million of local property taxes to supplement state-required costs, and I'm not talking about capital needs, I'm talking about operating money. That's eight cents on the local property tax that the state is demanding be used to supplement their budget. And I have to assume it's over $1 billion statewide. I don't, I don't have the facility to calculate that, because every budget, every county budget is going to be different. But for us, it's eight cents on the property tax is being required by the backend budget maneuvers that the legislature passes, and I don't think even the legislature knows that. And I'm reasonably confident most of our people in White County don't know that. I believe those numbers are true, however. So while we're sitting here figuring out how to change our teacher supplement process, how to reduce services to schools in terms of the behavioral coaches and things like that, and not fund our goal in terms of social-emotional health for counselors, social workers, and nurses, we are having to take local tax money to pay state expenses, and that's just not right. And somehow, we need to let Joan Street know that they need to stop and they need to refund, they need to finance the operating system, which is what the state constitution has redone in '72 or whatever it was, calls for. And so I hope a lot of people pick up this drum and beat it. But that's, I mean, just think, if $120 million were available to us in local funding, what differences that would mean to kids in our classrooms? It would be astounding.
Well, if I could just add to that, going back to when we presented the superintendent's proposed budget in early April, one of the slides I shared with you was from a study done in December of 2017 by the State's Office of Management Budget, which indicated two things that are telling, and perhaps to your point, Mr. Fletcher. The first was that, we go back to 2008-9, it may have been '19, between that point and, I think it went up to '15-'16, per pupil state funding for K-12 education, just for inflation, it dropped almost 10%. We receive about $10 billion from the state, 10% is about 100 million. The other interesting item that I shared out of that presentation was that, based upon the tax code changes that were made a few years ago, revenues, if they had not been made, revenues would be $4-ish, $5 billion higher statewide than they currently are. But that in context, whole state revenues are the $25 billion range, so $4 or $5 billion out of that, $25 billion.
And coupled with all that financial, you know, the loss, we've had this growth that we've had to keep up with in White County, with 35 births every day in our county, and 40-some people moving here every day, some of those school-aged children. And this is truly a budget where, in the last several years, we, Mr. Fletcher says, we go through this exercise of cutting and cunning, and not being able to advance what our community expects of an excellent education for the public school children, which is frustrating. And Triple P is a great program, and here we had it, we were just expanding one position, and we're not able to do that, with what we know is important, you know, to more pre-K. So we know what we need to invest in, and we're not able to do it to the extent we need to.
Last year's budget facilities requested one expanded position for maintenance. It was cut. There are none in this year's budget that I'm aware of.
That's right, and we added even additional schools. Do you lack a better word? And it is what it is.
In August, Mr. Nieder, you are going to come back so that we can, because I feel I need a fuller understanding of what the resolutions, what the impacts are, so I'm glad to hear you're going to come back this August so that we can set that up, but it's a board, I think we need to get a sense of how we can perform.
We'll be bringing that.
It's a change in how we've done our local funding.
And we'll also be bringing back to you the actual salary schedule. So you can get a sense of it. Thank you.
It's important, definitely.
You want to do your part?
Yeah, that's what I just said, we just definitely do our part.